All right, I'll call this meeting of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, March 25th, and it's 7:30 PM. Proper notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6, that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to the general public for anything that's not appearing on the agenda this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Keller.
Here.
We also have with us tonight Ms. Favate.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And Mr. Holloway.
Here.
Okay, we have a piece of correspondence from the only application we had on for this evening asking for postponement. And the letter suggests no further notice required, so we'll postpone that until April 8th meeting. So if there's anyone that's here for the application, 96 Jesipee Avenue, Block 5, 93, Lot 17, that case will not be heard this evening, postponed to April 8th, and no further notice required. All right. Mr. Steigas and Ms. London.
This is part two for us, Ed and I. We presented this presentation last week to members of the council. So councilmen, I apologize for repeating it again. You could probably do it yourself at this point.
I told them you'd go home and watch American Idol if you wanted to.
But, and Ed and I had appeared before you, or at least most of the members, probably two months ago, it seems like a while ago. And at that point, we were still negotiating with fair share, and we did not have our specific obligation number at that point. We have come a long way since our last meeting. For the record, I will just go through a couple of the background information slides, so it's part of the record, and then we will get into the specifics and bring you up to date to where we are at this point. Again, my name is Leslie London, and I'm with McManam &amp; Scotland &amp; Bowman. So as I'm sure all of the members are aware of Mount Laurel. The cases spanned and start back in 1975 with Mount Laurel 1, Mount Laurel 2 in 1983, and both of those cases established that municipalities in New Jersey have a constitutional obligation to provide for its fair share of affordable housing in the region, not just in the municipality, but the region. Parsippany is in Region 2. Mount Laurel 3 came in 1986, and it affirmed the validity of the New Jersey Fair Housing Act. I'm sure everyone is familiar with COA, the Council on Affordable Housing, and they were established under the New Jersey Fair Housing Act to promulgate rules and regulations to determine the municipality's obligation and to certify the housing plans of those municipalities. So essentially, townships like Parsippany have an obligation to prepare a housing element and fair share plan, and that plan addresses how the municipality will meet its housing obligations for the period of time involved. COA, as you know, promulgated rules for the first and second rounds. The township submitted plans for each of these rounds and received substantive certification. Those plans were approved. The township prepared a third round plan, petitioned COA, on two occasions, and during that time, litigation ensued for many years wherein the third round rules were challenged. Fair Share Housing Center in particular had filed suit, went to the Supreme Court of New Jersey, and that culminated in the infamous decision known as Mount Laurel 4, March 10th, 2015. As you know, Fair Share is the nonprofit organization who advocates for New Jersey's poor with respect to housing. So the important factor for Mount Laurel 4 is that the courts reinstated the court as the primary forum to evaluate and determinate and determine a municipality's compliance. COA was no longer involved. Judges were appointed in each visage and given authority to hear cases, known as declaratory judgment actions. Municipalities were given until July 8th, 2015, to file these actions with the court. And under the DJ action, the court would review the municipality's housing plan and determine its compliance with the Mount Laurel requirements. And the courts were also empowered to provide temporary immunity against builder remedie lawsuits for those municipalities that timely filed. Parsippany did timely file on July 8th and was granted temporary immunity, which it still has to this day. Shortly thereafter, developers started expressing interest in being part of the process. You had some interveners, some cases wound up being settled, and then you had a series of interested parties representing developers who also wanted to be part of the process. In the very beginning, there was controversy over what the municipality's obligation number should be. Fair Share Housing Center had Dr. Kinsey as its expert who prepared a statewide report. The obligations were based on region, and as I mentioned, Parsippany is part of Region 2, which includes Morris, Essex, Union, and Warren. The fair share numbers, Dr. Kinsey's numbers at that time, were extremely high. They were 2,865 affordable units. So in order to get that many affordable units, you would be building at least 14,000 total units, which is 20 percent. So it's an extremely outrageous number. As a result of that, the municipalities got together and formed a municipal consortium to work together. They hired E-Consult as the expert. The numbers from E-Consult were all the way at the other end of the spectrum. In Morris County, Judge Niergard is the second judge that was appointed, and a special courtmaster was also appointed. Judge Niergard replaced a judge that retired, and just to tell you how long this case has been going, Judge Niergard just retired in March. So we are now on judge number three, and it's a judge out of Sussex County. But I understand the judge will come to Morris, to Morris Town, so we don't have to trek all the way to Sussex County. Judge Niergard also appointed a regional courtmaster, Richard Redding, to provide further assistance. So the issue was raised as to the methodology to be used. The second issue involved the period of time to cover. Fair Share Housing advocated that you needed to go back to 1999 through the period of 2015 when COA did not act, and this was referred to as the gap period. Again, litigation ensued, went all the way to the New Jersey Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court ruled that the gap period would have to be included as a component of present need. Mercer County was the first visage to actually hold a trial on the methodology. That trial lasted 40 days and involved two municipalities, but there were at least five or six developers, interested parties, as part of that litigation. Richard Redding also served as the regional courtmaster for that visage. It wasn't until March 8th of 2018, so the case ended in the summer of 2017, so it shows you how long it took for the judge to issue her decision, which was in March of 2018. And it was a very lengthy decision, over 200 pages, very detailed, going into the methodology of how to determine the municipality's obligation. And in putting together that methodology, the judge had to look at the entire state. So that served as the blueprint for other judges in other visages to use that methodology. And Judge Jacobson's decision has not been overturned, so it still remains valid. So Judge Niergard did take Judge Jacobson's methodology, had Richard Redding apply it to the municipalities in Morris County, and in July of 2018, Richard Redding issued a report to Judge Niergard. Based on his report, he came up with a number of 1,313 affordable units for the period 1999 through 2025. Kinsey had redid his numbers and came out with 1,314, so it's a difference of one. But as you can see, the number of affordable units significantly decreased. Fair Share started out with 2,865 affordable units, and it went down to 1,314 units, so that is very significant. This is just a chart to show you statewide, those municipalities that have an affordable housing obligation of over 1,000 units. And as you can see, Parsippany at 1313 or 1314, depending on which number you use, the highest being Tom's River with 2,491. So Parsippany is not alone in having a very large obligation.
A quick question, is that Wayne in Monmouth County or Passaic?
Passaic.
Okay.
And in Morris County, Parsippany, of course, has the highest number because you are the largest municipality. So these are the numbers based on 500 and more affordable units. The closest would be Hanover to your number. So as you probably know, COA has rules that provide mechanisms to address that number. So the numbers appear very large to start out with, but you can utilize various mechanisms to bring down the number. One of those mechanisms, the vacant land adjustment analysis, was undertaken by the township in an effort to further reduce the township's number. Ed will be talking a little bit more about that analysis, but it was very successful in the sense that it reduced the number for the township, and the number being the realistic development potential. So we went down to 857 affordable units from the 1314. So we tried very hard, and we got your number down as low as we could. So as you can see, the significant reduction, again, starting with the 2,865, going down to 857 affordable units. So in order to meet the RDP of 857, there are various mechanisms that you can use to address that. And again, Ed will talk about the crediting and the bonuses to bring your number down, so the actual number of units that have to be built are much less than the 857. So in that toolbox, you have inclusionary zoning, which is the most popular because it's, you have developers that are standing willing to build, and that involves, as you know, market units plus affordable. We've been mandated by Fair Share to make sure that each of the developers have a 20 percent set aside. We had to fight tooth and nail to get 20 percent. Each developer came in with 15 percent, not wanting to move, but we held fast with the 20 percent. The only one that doesn't have 50 percent, excuse me, 20 percent, is Stanbury because that had, that an agreement had been entered into with them prior to this process. Another tool is 100 percent affordable project. You can have one project that has all affordable units in it, and that could be privately built or municipally sponsored. There's a market to affordable program, which takes market units that exist in the town and provide a subsidy to the owner landlord in order to reduce the rent so that the rents become affordable. This program is very beneficial because it keeps from having to build new units. You can take units that currently exist and buy them down. The money for this program comes from the trust fund. And as you will see when Ed talks about the plan, we have, as one of the components, a very strong market to affordable program. And the township hired community grants, planning, and housing to put this program together and to implement it. Group homes is another component, accessory apartments, an apartment over a garage, and of course zoning mechanisms, overlay zones, and changing zoning from commercial industrial to residential. And I'm sure this is just something that you already know, but the site selection mechanisms or requirements set by the code include that the sites have to be available, suitable, developable, and approvable. And this is what the standard will be when we go to court for each of the projects. We have to, or Ed will be testifying, and the planners for the developers have to testify that the project meets all of the goals. Procedurally, where we are now, council formally approved the mechanisms for the toolbox to meet the RDP, which Ed will go into detail. Council also approved execution of a settlement agreement with Fair Share, and I will go into the terms of that settlement shortly. We will require, we are required to have a fairness hearing of the settlement agreement before the court. Once the settlement agreement has been executed by the township and Fair Share, it's submitted to the judge, the judge will schedule a fairness hearing. During that, or shortly after that, we will have to prepare a housing element and fair share plan and spending plan, and the required ordinances to implement the plan, those ordinances being to allow for development of residential in those areas where currently residential is not permitted. Once all of that is done, we go back to court for a compliance hearing, just for the judge to make sure everything that she had, or he has laid out for the township to do that we have done. If we show that we have completed all the steps that have been laid out, the township will be granted final approval and immunity through 2025. It's coming around very quickly for the fourth round. The third round has taken so long, and actually, I just read last week in the paper, there's a push from an assembly ward in Bergen County for a moratorium on all affordable housing until the legislature can address it. It hasn't moved anywhere and probably won't, but at some point, the legislature, I believe, will be addressing round four. So the problem in failing to act, and the township in this case has not failed to act, results in builder remedie actions. And most importantly, you have no control over your planning, the courts will take over, and this is the key case in South Brunswick, where the judge had ruled that the municipality did not act in good faith and essentially took away the ability of the planning board and the township to determine what should be in your housing plan. You would never want to be in that situation because the ones driving the bus at that point are your developers, and you have a special courtmaster, and you have, as a public body, no involvement. So we're very fortunate we did not get to that point. So the key settlements of the settlement agreement. We will have the settlement agreement available shortly, just waiting for the final sign-off from Fair Share, and it can be executed by both parties. But very, the first part is that the township, it's a recognition that the township has satisfied its Mount Laurel obligations, and we are protected. The agreement, as I mentioned, must be approved at a fairness hearing. And importantly, Fair Share agrees to support the agreement and to work with the township in the event it is challenged, and that's very helpful. Also, the courtmaster has signed off on the settlement agreement, so when we go to court, we have Fair Share speaking on behalf of the township in support and also the courtmaster. So at the end of the day, the township will receive the judicial equivalent of substantive certification and protection through July 1st, 2025. There's a recognition also that the township's housing obligation for the third round is 1314, and that we have a vacant land adjustment with a realistic development potential of 857 affordable units. There's also a recognition in the settlement agreement that Fair Share agrees to the mechanisms that we have outlined for our plan to meet the 857 and the unmet need obligation, and Ed will go into more detail about those projects that are being used to satisfy the We have to submit adequate and stable funding for any non-inclusionary affordable housing developments. The housing units will be subject to UHAC regulations regarding bedroom distribution, those that have to be low and very low and moderate, and they have to be affirmatively marketed. And Fair Share has included a list of entities that are to receive notice. And all the new construction has to be adaptable, barrier-free design standards. And we are also required, under the settlement agreement, to introduce and amend the township's affordable housing and zoning ordinances to implement the plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we have to prepare and adopt the housing element and spending plan in accordance with the terms of the settlement agreement. We will be given a period of time after the fairness hearing to get this done. Generally, the courts give 120 days from the court's approval of the settlement agreement. If we need more time, they will generally provide it. We're not going to wait until the fairness hearing to start working on the ordinances because the fairness hearing, in all likelihood, will not be scheduled until probably June. So Ed will be working very vigorously to get these ordinances together, so we will be close to where we need to be probably by the time we have the fairness hearing. Another important factor of the settlement agreement is that if there is some law or a court judgment or action that results in a determination that your number should have been lower by more than 10 percent, more than 10 percent, we will be able to adjust the number in the future for the fourth round. We can go back to the third round, unfortunately, but it will be, it will provide a credit towards your number in the fourth round. The township is receiving $600,000 from Fair Share pursuant to a settlement that Fair Share entered into with RD Realty. Fair Share is requiring that that money go into the trust fund and to be used for certain affordable housing projects. The township will be required to provide annual reports on the status of how the township is doing in meeting its housing obligations. That will be, there will be an annual obligation and a midpoint report that's due July 1st, 2020. And these reports have to be posted on the township's website, and you can be sure the developers will be watching because if there is any project that falls through the wayside, the developer or a new developer is there to take its place. We will also have, as an aside, a development agreement or developers' agreement with each of the, I think we have seven developers. In the past, the settlement agreement had all of the developers, in addition to Fair Share as a signatory. That has changed over time, so there's a separate agreement that the township will be entering into with each of the developers outlining their obligation and setting forth their project, which, again, Ed will get into a little bit more detail what the project entails. So essentially, that's where we are at this point. I'm working on the developer agreements. I hope to submit the settlement agreement to the court in the next week or so. We should have a hearing date provided shortly after I submit the settlement agreement. I'm assuming it'll be at least 45 days, 60 days, from the submission of the settlement agreement, and we will be working on the ordinances that will eventually come to you also for approval in order to effectuate the plan. Any questions?
Yeah, how different will the individual agreements with each developer be? Will they be just the logistics of each site, or is there other details?
Yes, I have, I have a shell of an agreement, a core, that will be the same for each of the developers. The only difference will be the actual plan.
Okay.
So they will all be subject to essentially the same UHAC regulations, bedroom distribution. We have-
20 percent set aside.
20 percent set aside. We have, I think, at least one developer, maybe two, that is going to satisfy their 20 percent, partially in the new development and partially as part of the markdown, the market to affordable. This particular developer owns a lot of the rental units in the township, and if they can satisfy us at Fair Share that this is realistic, they can mark down those market units, and those can be used for purposes of affordable, meaning affordable obligation.
Thank you.
Who and how are the developers selected?
We, meaning the township.
Yeah.
Met with everyone who requested to be met or contacted the township with a project. And we had several meetings, many, many meetings with each, going through their project. We tried to put together a plan, and what drove everything was our number. So we knew we had to have, after the credits and bonuses were applied, 300 and some odd affordable units. So the question then became, how do we arrive or meet those 300? And you have projects, all the various projects before you. And so even with a 200-unit project, it only yields 20 percent, so to get to 300, you need several projects unless you have 100 percent somewhere. And we tried to spread out the projects so that one area would not be impacted more than the other. For the most part, each of the developers are in the plan because we actually needed them, and one will be part of unmet need. And we tried to scale down. Some came with the luminous projects that, you know, would change drastically the landscape of the township. So for those, we said, no, you have to come back and give us something better. So it was trial and error, meeting, and we had several, many meetings with council going over the projects and seeing which one fits better for the township, which one impacts the schools less. So a lot went into the selection.
If I can interject here, let me, let me tell you that there were, and Leslie's not exaggerating when she tells us that there are projects that were in the pipeline, that were proposed, if you will, that would change the character of Parsippany, everything from projects that would be taller than some buildings in downtown Manhattan to just acres and acres and acres of development. We, you know, I think we saw it all. I've been bird dogging this on behalf of the board since January of last year and trying to keep up so that- to keep up so that when the time came, I'd be able to inform the board exactly how it is and why we ended up where we ended up. Let, let me, let me take this opportunity to thank both, both Leslie and, and Ed for the work that they've done on this. As you've seen in the presentation, the township started off a year and a half ago in a very, very bad place with Fair Share. I would, it's how I would categorize it. Not only were, was our number very high, scarily high, in a way that would change the character of Parsippany drastically, but also I, I, I think it's fair to say that there were certain trust issues between the township and between Fair Share and that the negotiation was really, really being done at arm's length, to say the least. Leslie was able to come in and resolve a lot of that and ended up in a place where we were able to negotiate gladly with, with Fair Share and confidently. And able to get this to a place that I, I believe is about as manageable as the township can, could hope for is, is where we landed. And a big, big credit goes to, to Ed as well on that because the work he did on, on the vacant land adjustment here was, was simply incredible. I mean, you saw the number that we were at prior to the vacant land adjustment and where we landed at after. And that's, you know, I watched Ed really leave no square foot of vacant land within the township, undisturbed or, or unconsidered. So we owe a debt of gratitude to both of these individuals. I think that this, uh, the settlement has turned out from a legal perspective as well as a planning perspective, really as well as, as we could have hoped for. Councilman?
I've already given them my high five, so I, I agree with you. I have a question, though. Looking, looking ahead to when these projects come before the planning board is site plans. The agreements that we make are going to limit what the planning board can, the density officer is going to be fixed. We can have some concern about traffic, but not, not as much there either because we can't lower the numbers. So we're going to be constrained when the application is going to be forced on what we can and cannot, cannot work with.
That's, that's true.
May I, may I, Ms. London? We will be very constrained as these applications come before us, councilman. You at the, at the council level will not be, and we will, and just so the board, to give you a preview of advice, I'll give you when these projects do come before us. We cannot consider traffic impacts. There's a case called Duncan Donuts versus such and such township. I forget which one it was. But it's, it determined that planning boards cannot consider off-site traffic impacts of developments. That, that's really the province of the governing body. So once the governing body has decided that this is a suitable use at, at the location, it's, it's determined that they've also considered the traffic impacts associated with the use. So we're not able to consider that. When we see these projects, they will be presumably largely conforming and the, the board will have little jurisdiction to deny them. What we will have jurisdiction to do is consider the safety and, and the site plan aspects of the application. And if there are any onsite changes or conditions that the board feels are appropriate, we are free to impose those, particularly as regards safety and as regards traffic circulation onsite.
Let's take one example, for instance. Down at the Arlington Shopping Center, and right by the Holiday Inn, there's a little tiny jug handle turn.
Mm-hmm.
With the development we see in this round and possibly the next round coming up down there where Kmart's going to become a warment and Modell's is gone and several other locations there will be leaving too and will be, I guess, the next round. That little jug handle is not going to do it. So where, does the town council address that or does the planning board?
The town council addresses that, just as with 1515, all of the off-site improvements are also being proposed as part of the redevelopment plan there. The town council is going to have to consider, consider those because we won't be, the board, there's no jurisdiction to consider anything outside the bounds of the property.
Okay.
Now, Scott, I believe that DOT would probably also be involved in that.
Yes, of course. Yeah, well, you're, you're right. That's Route 46 in particular. So Root DOT, NJ DOT is going to have a lot to say about that.
Right. And I think it certainly wouldn't preclude the developer from looking at off-site improvements that their development really needs to, to function.
Sure.
Correct?
I mean, it's, you know, any developer of that Kmart site is going to understand that the site will be inaccessible given current, current constraints. I would hope.
But using that specific example, there are roads behind that facility that come very close to the property. We want to make sure we protect the residents behind that property. Is that correct? We would have some say in that?
No.
That would be the town council, right?
No. You, 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 you cannot consider anything off-site.
But there are things we can do on the site that could help protect those.
Well, there are no current connections to the neighborhood that is behind that property, though, right?
Speaking as a councilman, there, there is not, actually, there's a road, Johnny's Farm Road, which goes right up to the shopping center. And we blocked that road. We had Mossberg put tons of dirt over there to block the road. As far as I'm concerned, that's an access road into the residential area and I would not want to see that pile of dirt be taken away.
Nor was that any part of any agreement or any plan that they showed us.
Okay.
Ultimately.
Keep that in mind.
We don't want to distract ourselves with too many specifics.
The board can concern itself with safe ingress and egress to and from any site that we're considering. So that has what you might, in your mind, think of as a slight off-tracked component to it. But ultimately, you can't decide that, you know, this, how this is going to affect the neighborhood behind it or in front of it or adjacent to it. That's what the town council will be doing in deciding whether or not the development will be permitted there.
How will these projects be timed with regard to our master plan? Will they be conforming in any way to our new master plan requirements?
Well, I think with the timing, it seems that the housing plan is probably going to go first, which I'm kind of grateful for because it means that the master plan can account for, you know, these developments. We're not going to replicate what's in the housing plan, you know, we'll reflect it, we'll acknowledge it, that these developments are going to be part of the planning horizon for the next seven years.
And so the, the project that's been proposed has already been worked out, more or less. We're just being informed about it now, correct? And you've worked that out, I'm sure, with all the other council people that are.
I will say, though, that site plan will still be the purview of this board. They do have to come to you for site plan approval. So you have the ability to look at that site plan as your attorney was pointing out.
All right, we can make them plant some more trees. It's.
Absolutely. No, we've done a few trees. We looked at basically parking and configurations and buildings and so on and so forth.
Johnny, you already picked up on my pet peeve.
Yeah.
And lighting and things like that.
It's going to be definitely something that you're going to scrutinize.
And a gazebo, we can require a gazebo.
At least one.
Leslie, when will we be at liberty to see the menu of, of, of projects that are going to be coming forward?
That's what I was just about to do.
I think, I think we do it.
Okay. Excellent. Very good. One last question, just way into the future, beyond 2025. We're out of land. What's next?
Build up.
You can do another vacant land adjustment.
Then you adjust. And I can touch on that.
I'm just curious.
Your house, your house becomes a three-family. That's what.
Or does everybody have to go to the Pine Lands in Sussex County? I mean.
Right, right. What we're being subject to now is the slowdown of the office market. And that has been the real biggest issue that we've been trying to wrestle with as far as the developability and availability of some of these parcels. And because we're at such a level of some vacancy, someone, it's disputable, but yet at the same time, we, that, we're there and therefore we have to accommodate some of that to be redeveloped. So it's not just vacant land, it's.
Okay.
Land that becomes available as a result.
And I think for the fourth round, there will be action from the state. That's what I'm hearing.
We're very hopeful.
You're praying.
Ed and Leslie.
Um, yeah, I want to know about the stormwater regulations and how they're going to be handling that if these are coming to us already pretty much. I mean, I know we get to look at the site plan, but.
Right.
How are they handling stormwater regulations, new regulations that are coming down, green infrastructure? Is that going to be?
You get to look at that. You get to look at that.
They'll have to meet whatever regulations are in place.
That's all part of site plan, right?
I understand, but our ordinance is, our ordinance is a little bit old.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that, too.
Right.
So will that all come to fruition before?
Right.
This is.
In order for your ordinances also to comply with DEP regulations. And that's what we will cite likely in the ordinances as Susan and I work out the ordinances.
Yeah, because this is going to significantly change our previous coverage.
It will. And realize that some of these sites, though, are already developed and fairly well-developed.
I think most of them are, aren't they?
Yeah, so that's really not much greenfield here.
Are there any that are not currently developed?
Let me go through it. Let me go through it. You can do it as soon as I have.
But the new rules are also that, you know, you stood that up.
Okay. Ed?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure being here. Thank you for having me. It has been a long process going through this whole review of the housing plan, and I appreciate the kind words as well. It has been a, a long process, but a good tag team all around, and I would include Susan in that as well because we did involve her in some of the conversations. So it's a pleasure to be here. And what I'll go through is some of this you may have seen in the earlier presentations as to how we went about the vacant land adjustment, as well as what I would call then arriving at the realistic development potential. The vacant land adjustment is one element. It speaks for itself. You look at vacant land, you see what's available from your vacant land statuses. But then you look at environmental criteria over top of that vacant land adjustment. And after you, you sandwich that with the environmental criteria, you're able to distill the actual parcels that are of a size that would realize potential development. And so there's formulas and there's requirements and standards associated with that. In addition to that, what we're also subject to in going to an adjustment phase is that we had to account for the developers who were ready, willing, and able to have their development included in the plan. So realistically, that actually gets assigned to your RDP. You feel like you're chasing your tail as you're adding new sites to the RDP number, saying, wait a minute, how am I ever going to address that number if I keep going and adding new, new and more sites? So that was a little bit of a process, as well as there were a few sites that they, Fair Share Housing Center, wanted to have included in the overall RDP analysis. And I'll just put it that way as a general summary of the overall process. Again, you may have seen some of these maps, but what this is, is a area, I call these the quadrants of Parsipony, wherein we then overlaid over those quadrants, you can see environmental restrictions such as steep slopes. This is sort of the upper areas of the, I guess, the southwestern component of the township. Also, floodplains are areas that were restricted by if they were on the Rossi list, which is your recreation open space inventory. We are able to exclude properties within those categories. But all the sites you're seeing in red started to add to the RDP. Yes, even some of them that were up in the upper reaches of the town, even though they were, they were of a size that was rather small. But when you, after you factor them into the formulas, they do add to your vacant land adjustment. So you can see, we went through the central quadrant and the other quadrants of the overall township. And in doing so, there was a total of about 16,000 acres of vacant land. You wouldn't realize that maybe as you, you think your town has been built out, which I would believe as well in being involved in some of the earlier planning, but that the vacant and municipal parcels reviewed was about 5,200 acres. And I say municipal parcels because, like I said, the Rossi list gets involved in excluding certain properties because it's restricted, because it was purchased by open space trust fund monies or the like. But then there was about 126 acres of qualifying vacant land in the overall summary. These are just some of the key, key points. In addition to that, the development, developed land qualifying for the RDP was about 100, another 166 acres. So from that, we then distilled all that together in order to arrive at what's developable from a vacant land standpoint, but other RDP calculations required lands with development potential such as plant nurseries. You know, Serbo's Farm, that actual greenhouse facility that still remains on that property is actually considered under the rules, the affordable housing rules, as a potential site for redevelopment, and we had to include that as well. We're also able to, though, exclude your golf courses. Golf courses also come up in, in one of the other categories of sites to consider. The golf courses were able to be restricted because they really weren't owned by, they were either protected as open space or they weren't owned by their, their members of the golf course. So with that, after we distilled it all down, we, we were able to realize a RDP number of 857 units. So it does save about 457 from the 1,314 of need. That 457 units, though, is what's called unmet need. You may hear me refer to that as unmet need. First, to address the RDP, which is really ultimately what's called the realistic development potential of the township. We then developed several plan components. Before I go there, just to give you a quick snapshot of what income limits qualify right now for affordable housing, you can see under a three-person household, moderate is about 68,000, low is about 42,000, very low is about 25,000.
Ed.
Yes?
I get asked for those numbers all the time, what is low-income housing?
Right.
I can't never remember those numbers. Can I get a copy of that sometime in the future?
Certainly, certainly. I can email that to you. And it's, uh, these are the 2018 numbers. They haven't computed the 2019 yet, but they're generally the same. They're around the same numbers. So it gives you a sense for what those income levels are. And you can see from some of these numbers that these are households that may have people who work locally in, whether they be in retail or in storefronts, but also possibly even in the municipal building and other types of service sort of oriented businesses. So therefore, it's, it's important to consider that affordable housing does address a full spectrum of need. It's not just, some people call or refer to it as Section 8 housing. It's not Section 8 housing. You're being, you're subsidizing the income or the, the affordability of either the rents or the ownerships of, of facilities by actually providing the density within the developments. And that's the mechanism that you'll hear me talk about.
So, Ed, what, what percentage of those incomes do they figure goes toward housing?
No more than 80%.
No more than?
No more than 80%, uh, 30%. 30%. Excuse me.
About what I spend on my house, 80%.
Yeah, that's about right.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you looked at how much people, like everyone in New Jersey is spending on their housing costs, you'd be amazed at how many people are spending over 30%.
40%. Yeah, a lot. A lot.
Very cost-effective.
If I understand correctly, our median income in New Jersey is in the 50s? Is that still correct?
Um, I believe it's even higher than the moderate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It might have been nationwide, that I was thinking.
What's that?
Might have been nationwide, I was thinking.
Okay. Yeah, maybe. Yeah, these are based on the region, the region two income limits, which is our region. There are several regions within the overall state.
Okay.
And will the dwelling allow for five people in one dwelling?
It depends. Some of these units have to be three-bedroom units. And so you can see, that can accommodate five people in that unit. There's a requirement in the rules, and that's the UHAC regulations that Leslie was identifying earlier. They require you to have a certain number of three-bedroom units in the developments. And that is also understood by most, if not all, developments, developers, we hope, that they have to have that included because that works into their pro forma, the number of units that they need to achieve in order to make the numbers balance as a result. So overall, there's obligation, there's an obligation summary that is broken down to several different levels. What we've been talking about is the RDP, but we still need to also consider what's called rehabilitation or present need and prior round obligation from the prior round. You can see this, the rehabilitation is the present need within the community. And what that translates into is the number of homes within the community that have been identified that potentially need monies to help rehabilitate them, that might be income-qualified individuals. And that's based on census data establishing what that overall need number is. We could go about doing our own survey of individual homes, but it did not prove to be worthwhile. The number seems somewhat reasonable from the standpoint of the fact that we currently participate, you'll see in a minute, with this CDBG program for rehabilitation. So we're using federal monies to help rehabilitate units within the community. What I mean by rehabilitation is to bring a home up to code, whether it be their roofing, electrical system, plumbing, things of that nature, but they might be income-restricted and not have the ability to do so. So what, we've actually succeeded in having a very successful rehabilitation program, in my opinion. Prior round obligation, that's where Leslie was talking about. We received prior certifications of our plan. And during prior certifications of the plan, I'm sure Councilman DiPiero can even expand on this, we went through many iterations wherein we then utilized various programs to address what is now called prior round obligation between 1987. to address what is now called prior round obligation between 1987 to 1999. But within the RDP number is the gap period and the prospective need. As Leslie talked about, the gap period is from 1999 to 2015. And then the prospective need is from where the court case was establishing in 2015, the need up to 2025. Again, the rehabilitation share at 196 units, we realize that we have 35 units of credit between 2010 to 2016 that we're taking against that 196 units to bring it down to 161 units of total rehabilitation need within the community. And again, we participated in this community development block grant program since 1977 successfully. Unfortunately, I was hoping to use all of the credits since the prior round, including the gap period, but Fair Share Housing Center would object to that from the standpoint of when the census data was taken for the 196 units of need. So therefore, we're only able to apply from 2010 onward. For the prior round, this is addressed. We have a 664-unit obligation. We have prior round credits of Baldwin Oaks and Brookside that we're looking to apply. We're also looking to apply prior round regional contribution agreement, RCAs. For those of you who have not heard of this term before, what RCAs are is what the former ability to do was to zone for certain improvements within your community, but use your trust fund monies or developers' fees to help pay for units to be built or rehabilitated in another community within your region, within our region. Parsippany entered into agreement between the city of Newark, where we sent monies down to Newark in order to rehabilitate and develop units. Unfortunately, that program is no longer available. It was deemed an inappropriate program under the rules. So therefore, we do still get credit for them, but we can only apply those credits to the prior round. And that was 294 units of RCA credits. In addition to that, we also had other, what we call alternative living housing or group homes, which had bonuses associated with them, as well as built inclusionary developments with bonuses. And those would be developments like Mill Run on Route 10, other types of developments that have been built that included affordable housing. So all told, you can see that we have a total of 664 credits. Therefore, we meet our prior round. What's not shown here in this analysis is that there are additional units for Baldwin Oaks and Brookside that we're looking to carry over to the third round. So under what we talked about, some of the tools, these are some of the things we're looking to apply is the prior round surplus credits, market-to-affordable mechanisms, accessory apartment mechanisms. I'll talk about those in a moment. Some additional group homes, as well as inclusionary housing proposals and zoning. And then to address the unmet need of 452 units, we are recommending and identifying several overlay zones for the ability to address unmet need, in addition to a township-wide program, which I'll address in a minute. So overall, just looking at the entire township, what are we looking at as far as where the developments are distributed? And you can see in this illustration that there really is a widespread distribution of those specific units throughout the community. What Leslie touched on earlier is that of some of those, we do have several developments where they exist and we're looking to utilize their credits or there's approvals for those developments. And so therefore, we're looking to apply those credits. Again, Baldwin Oaks and Brookside are existing age-restricted developments. And the reason why I said I had excess credits from the prior round is that these were called prior cycle credits, hopefully not throwing too many abbreviations at you, but prior cycle credits were built before certain rules went into effect. And because these units were age-restricted, Fair Share Housing Center took a specific exemption to, or exception, excuse me, to the fact of applying them for a one-for-one credit. Previously, we were granted a one-for-one credit. We debated that. We went through mediation in significant effort to try to get full credit for each one of those units without having them be age-restricted. The reason why I mention age-restricted is that you're not permitted to have more than 25% of your total need number be addressed by age-restricted units. In other words, think of it this way, you can't just zone for seniors and elderly within your community and not have any school-aged children. That's really the effort by which the rules limit the amount of age-restricted units. So in addition to that, we have 700 Mountain Way, which was a used variance that also garners us credits plus bonus credits. We also have what's called Kingston Commons, was another used variance on Kingston Road, I believe, for two units and two bonus credits for a total of four. We have an existing group home that we actually get five additional bonus credits. We get a credit per bedroom in each group home and that's what's great about group homes. Although group homes don't satisfy what's called family units, that's another category of need that you have to address. In addition to that, we have special homes in New Jersey and Rose House, which also have several bedrooms associated with them. So what you're seeing here is with bonuses, 274 credits that we're able to apply to the RDP of 857. So now comes the proposed sites. And these are sites that are again distributed throughout the community. What you're seeing here is sites located such as the Kmart facility located on Route 46. You have some on Edwards Road, which I'll talk about. Some located on Cherry Hill Road at the existing vacant parcel that's next to the UPS Technology Center. You also have sites within the MacCallie corporate campus. There are two sites that are being proposed there. You have Stanbury, which you know well about, but also located on Johnson, Johnston, Johnson Road, is the Wykurt Office Building that's located on that roadway. That's also part of the plan as well. Stanbury realizes 67 units of affordable. It's going to give us 67 bonus credits for 134 total credits. MacCallie is going to be an inclusionary development. Two and seven Campus Drive are the two locations. We have 410 units proposed there. So it's 82 units of credit at 20% set aside and then 82 units of bonuses towards 164 units of credit. West Mount Plaza, you'll hear this phrase, that's the Kmart facility. Being that Kmart is vacant and we all know where we are with the retail market these days, they became a ready and willing developer. And it also, as a location on Route 46, helped us reduce impacts to single-family neighborhoods. Yes, as you were bringing up earlier, be very, very conscious about access into and out of residential areas, but yet they will have access directly to Route 46, plus they have a park-and-ride facility as well. And Susan, appropriately you mentioned that. It's an important consideration. Also, we have SJP, what I call SJP, Morris Corporate Center 6, which was the last remaining parcel, was the old BASF office building that was on that campus. Again, vacant parcel. It is an area deemed in need of redevelopment. There was not a redevelopment plan ever composed for that area, but yet it was available and because it was on Cherry Hill Road, it made sense to consider that site for affordable housing in order to address our need. What you're seeing in the Wykurt, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I jumped over Edwards Road, I apologize. But what you're seeing in the Wykurt Edwards Road locations is that we're not showing any bonuses here. And the reason for that is that you can't get more than 25% of that RDP. So 25% of the 857 units can be addressed by bonuses. Otherwise, everybody would overbalance the bonuses on the end. And it was the effort by the rules to make sure that you weren't exceeding a certain level of bonuses in order to get affordable housing built within the community. I apologize, jumping over these two sites. These are located on Edwards Roads, 750 and 887 Edwards Road. You can see there are smaller total number of units within those developments because they are being infilled at those specific locations. These are areas of uplands. We're all aware of some of the flood plains in that area. They do have uplands on the properties. That's where we were making sure of that, as well as there are free and clear wetland buffers. That was another critical thing we took a look at.
Ed, how?
Yes?
What are the bonuses? How do you get bonuses?
What bonuses are, good question. I'm sorry if I jumped over that. What bonuses are is that all, most, if not all of these developments are going to be rental. When you have rental units, the affordable housing regulations recognize that that's something they want to promote. They tend to be easier for people who may be income-restricted to afford and to live at in those locations. And so therefore, what we tried to do was to maximize those bonuses that would be available to the township by accepting some of the rental proposals that were being proposed to the township. But yet, there was only so many bonuses we could take and that's why you're starting to see some of that be limited out on the table in order to address your need.
Rentals are worth more than a condo or a co-op.
Exactly.
Up to a point.
Up to a point.
Up to the limit.
Yeah.
Okay. One of the problems I've heard with anybody renting an apartment is the ability to put the security deposit. How does that get addressed with these low-income, where those people are probably living paycheck to paycheck at best?
I think they are.
Go ahead. I think we have to be careful. It's affordable. It's not low-income.
Okay, affordable.
That's a good point to keep in mind.
Right. Yeah, but looking at the income levels, they're living paycheck to paycheck.
But remember, the rents are reduced.
Yes.
So the month and a half rent is reduced as well.
And this still isn't a mortgage down payment.
Right.
No, it's not a mortgage down payment, but.
But they want to see a security deposit.
A security of a first month, last month, whatever, yep.
Right, so that is reduced as well and that's worked into the formula.
Ed, would it be inappropriate for me to ask about another site? And if it is, just tell me so, but is anything proposed at GSK?
At GSK, there is something proposed for unmet need.
It's unmet need, okay.
Correct. And the reason being is that at the GSK site, GlaxoSmithKline on 1500 Littleton Road, at that site, the proposal was for age-restricted development. There was a real recognition that there needed to be a sensitivity taken with that site as to the types of units that were being proposed. And so there was just age-restricted being proposed there, as well as a small component of assisted living facility. And those of you who may not know what assisted living is, it's like a nursing home, but yet it's a little nicer in the sense that it's a age-in-place. You buy into the units. It's not necessarily just one room in the facility. It's more units within the development itself.
And it's the fact that it was age-restricted that it doesn't really help us for this round.
Right.
Which is why it goes toward unmet need.
Right, exactly.
We were already at our cap.
Just an aside, a facility like Cedar Crest, where you buy in, but then you pay a monthly rent, what are those called?
Those are called assisted living units.
Well, no, are they rental or are they?
Are they be considered interesting? Because you are buying the unit, aren't you?
No, you're getting money back.
Right. It's like a deposit down payment.
It's like a bond that you get back.
I never applied bonuses to those. Probably because of it's a question of whether or not that would qualify as a rental unit.
It probably does. I mean, you have to buy in. Some of it's really expensive. I can't imagine how it could qualify.
But it wouldn't help us because we have too many bonuses.
The way Cedar Crest works, I have no idea. I'd love to say it's $100,000 to buy in.
Right.
You die. That 90% of that goes to your estate. On the other hand, if you are living there and you run out of money, they eat into that $100,000, they will not kick you out.
Right.
So, but you do pay a monthly rent.
Right.
On top of that, but you can't pay rent until you buy in.
The units up in part of St. Clair's Hospital, what was the name of that?
Franciscan Oaks.
Franciscan Oaks. I looked into that years ago, we thought my mother was going to need that. They wanted half a million dollars upfront, plus Medicare and Medicaid, whatever she had coming to her, on top of that. And for that, if she was able to take care of herself pretty much in the beginning, but as she got more and more frail, they would move her to more assisted living, you know, and she would stay the rest of her life no matter what she needed.
But the age-in-place.
Right.
I don't know what they're proposing for GSK.
It's like fellowship village down in.
One of those might be a continuing care type facility.
Okay.
Interesting part of that story was my sister, who lives in North Carolina, was looking down there for my mother too. And for facilities just as nice as Franciscan Oaks, they wanted 125,000.
Yeah, way cheaper.
Yeah.
It's based on the incomes down there, not up here.
Yeah, right.
I have a question about how the bonuses were attributed. Is there any relevance to how they were attributed in terms of how those projects are related to the builders themselves?
Primarily no, except that Stanbury was already in the pipeline, that that was probably the one that where we could apply directly those credits.
Okay.
Because in fact, the zoning was in place and it was something of a redevelopment plan that we already had.
And does it make any difference to the projects if Edwards Road got bonuses instead of West Mount Plaza?
No.
Okay.
No, it doesn't. But yet, what we did is just to assign these credits so that they could see in the listing where in fact they were, where they weren't. But at the same time, you are entitled to those bonuses. What we will have, as Leslie touched on earlier, is the need to do reporting as we get closer to 2025 in order to see where we are with some of these developments. Some developments may precede others. That's not necessarily a sequential order by when they're going, they might become before this board. So I would say you would be then shifting those bonuses around to accommodate and get the most you can.
Ed, excuse me, those bonuses don't necessarily reflect the maximum number of rental units at any one of those developments. They're just for our accounting and crediting purposes.
They represent a credit, a bonus for the affordable units.
For the affordable units.
Correct.
So does that mean that, say Wykurt Site 1, there could be affordable units there, it's just that we're not able to take a bonus for them? Is that correct?
Because.
So that number 19 or 5 or 23, the credit is not necessarily precluding whether there's a, it's just that we can't claim it?
That's right. Those bonuses really will adjust themselves depending upon which development comes first, really.
But the credits are the affordable units.
And you're still allowed, because you have so many units providing.
Right.
The ability to meet the RDP, you still have the ability to apply those bonuses from that.
Okay.
So just to make sure that it's clear, that that first column, that is the number of affordable units at each development.
Thank you for that.
And that would be agreed upon as part of the agreement.
But the bonus accounting, that the bonus is just for us meeting certain criteria.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily say what's being built within a specific development.
It will come back at time of reporting, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Like, let's say, let's say the SJP site is the first one that you approve and gets constructed. I would say that then that rises closer to the top.
I see, okay, got you.
And that gets all the bonuses associated with it. It's just that you can't exceed more than that 25%. So we took 25%.
Right, right.
That's what we were showing.
Now, if I've done my math right, we're at just under 1,800 total units?
That's about right.
Okay.
Yeah, 1770, thereabout.
1778.
Yeah, somewhere around that.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Yeah, the total number of units are what they are and.
I know traffic is not supposed to be counted and I know you guys are doing the best you can because what you have to work with. It's just, I do live down in that southwest corner and it's going to be horrendous, not just because of us, because Morris Plains is right there doing the same thing and I know they're in the same region, but there's no accounting for that because right next to Stanbury and MacCallie, a mile away or less, there's another Morris Plains, just put in another, a place and they're putting a 400 resident townhomes.
Right.
And a hotel. And so even though they're in the same region, there's, nobody cares in the state about regional planning.
Correct.
I think you touched on a very good point. It's something where we wish the state would understand that and take that into account. But unfortunately, we have to deal with the rules that we have.
Yeah.
That's all we can do.
It's going to change that part of Parsippany.
Sure will.
From the way it is now.
Something to consider though is you do benefit from the other network of roads. I'm not trying to make sure, not trying to say there's not a concern.
I'm sorry, do I benefit from what?
Let's say from the MacCallie corporate campus. You have Campus Drive, you have Dryden Way. So you do have other means of getting to the more regional roadways as a result.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of Littleton, things of that nature.
Those regional roadways are currently clogged. I think Judy's absolutely right.
I'm stuck in between them though. I'm like right in there, so.
Yeah.
You can't sell me on that one.
I'm not going to, I'm not trying to sell you.
That section of Parsippany and Morris Plains is the poster child for regional planning. 53 is already tied up.
Right. Right.
10, 53 to 10, and then you get to 202.
Yeah.
Don't try to do it between 8 and 10 in the morning and 4 and 6 at night.
Because it's Hanover, Danville, they're all coming up with the projects. It's almost like what you see on Park Road down near Morris Township and all. Everybody's doing their own little thing along the same road.
The only, the only good news, if you want to call it that, is that the access road from Dryden Way into Johnny, was it Johnson Road? Johnson Road behind it, okay, will take some traffic off of the 10-202 intersection.
Yeah.
Delta Dental, the Octagon Building.
You mean with Stanbury.
And this track will all go that way and not go up to that jug handle figure eight at 202 and 10.
Yeah, and one thing on the MacCallie project in particular, which I know we don't have it up, the detail of it, but you know, we did spend a lot of time, and these guys more than me, but I was in some of those meetings, on where on that campus the development could go and making sure that it's not all on 202, that it's, you know, interior to the site, that they have other ways to get to and from without having to go to 202.
Right.
It kind of is what it is.
The other thing we did with those negotiations is we got rid of the hotel that they wanted to put right on 202.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, that property, the township's going to buy it and keep it as an open space area right near 202.
That's good. You mean on, near GSK? Or on the other side?
The other side.
MacCallie side.
The MacCallie property that fronts on 202.
That was what I hear Morris Plains is they put it where the railroad is, where that whole empty space on Speedway, putting a hotel because there's not enough hotels.
Is there a timeframe for these to be built? I mean, to figuring in everything, I mean, I'm just thinking, that's 1778 more apartments that the Housing Department has to inspect and fire prevention has to inspect and zoning has to issue permits for. I mean, is there a timeframe for that, for us to start figuring?
All we have to do is zone. We have to zone for it, number one.
That's all we have to do. Then Jen has to do everything else.
But then the developers, developers' market has to be there. One of the things we're scratching our head about is where's the market for all these units? But not to say that there won't be the need for that as well, is it'll be based on, they will need to come through the site plan process. They will need to make sure they're meeting their needs as far as, you know, redevelopment of a specific piece of property, because most of these sites have development on them. So they're going to be replacing an existing income use. Maybe it's not a very great income, but they're going to need to turn that over rather fast and/or do it in accordance with the market. So I don't, what we're understanding is that they've said that these are available and now we're willing to build these locations. And we are saying, okay, so that's a realistic potential for this third round. And it's only seven years of timeframe. That's a short timeframe.
That would be sort of miraculous.
Yeah, it would be.
You said something interesting. They have to market it. Now, the fact that they're in the process of building it and marketing it, do we get the credit at that point? Or do they have to be rented?
As soon as you approve it, you get the credit for it.
Okay.
Yeah, we get the credit as soon as we zone for it.
Okay.
But the bonuses will be something of reporting, you know, it's going to depend upon which one's built out or approved at that point for when we then apply the bonuses.
Yeah, just to be clear for the board's purpose, you know, the township's obligation is to zone for all of this development. You actually don't need to, none of it needs to actually be built in order to satisfy our obligation. That said, in Parsippany, you know, there's a line out the door to build these units. So they will in fact get built here in Parsippany. In many towns, you know, the Hardings of our county, if you will, you could tell them they've got to build 1,000 units of affordable housing. It doesn't matter because no one's going to build it. They zone for it, nothing happens, and that's the end of affordable housing for so many municipalities throughout the state. Parsippany is in a unique position because we've got, you know, all these office complexes that are underutilized, et cetera, and developers are ready to go.
Ed, when you said market, marketing.
For those places.
We got to do one at a time, I'm sorry. Marketing, wasn't there a component, I don't remember if it was around two or three, for a number of jobs created?
Yeah, unfortunately, no. That was growth share. That was growth share. And that was the multipliers we were working through for growth share when we submitted a plan for the third round. And we said, okay, based on growth share, this is what we think our projection's going to be and how many units we had to build in order to meet that need. Unfortunately, that was determined as invalid and they overturned those rules. And we went through all that effort. Yes. Sitting on our hands.
I will admit, I drive past the Harding Affordable Housing weekly. And the problem with it is there are no jobs and no transportation from where that is.
There's no jobs, no transportation. As I understand, there's no infrastructure either.
You look at that map there and you see jobs and infrastructure for transportation.
Right.
And Parsippany is perfect.
Well, infrastructure also includes water and sewer.
Sure.
Except the state didn't take that into account, I don't believe.
Well, they do. They do. Some of the areas like Harding Township, which truly has exclusionary zoning, five acre and 10 acre housing, right? They don't have water and sewer. They have subficent wells. And you can't build cheap with subficent wells, so they get ignored.
I didn't mean to bring up one municipality in particular, but Harding, in Harding, they actually need to connect to Morris Township's water and sewer. And if Morris Township says no, that's the end of it.
Okay, but all they have to do, all they have to do is zone, zone for it.
All you have to do is create the opportunity.
Right.
That's your obligation.
To the Jersey City Reservoir. The state required us to do that.
Yeah, which is just going to be extra expense on our part.
Well, no, we've already been, we've been doing it for years now.
Is this information public now?
We have to buy 100 million gallons, no. Whether we use it or not, we pay for 100 million gallons a year.
Yeah. So that's the proposed sites to address RDP. I do need to cover the summary of overall credits because there's some other mechanisms that we'll be applying. Again, we are using, again, the prior cycle credits, existing approved, being applied, proposed inclusionary developments is 501, proposed alternative living. There are two group home entities that are interested in building additional group homes or retrofitting existing homes into group homes, where we're proposing an additional 40 units. What they will be looking for is monies from the trust fund to help assist with those renovations for the group homes. And I think that's some of your best bang for the buck from the standpoint of credits because each bedroom counts as an affordable unit within the group homes. Additional market to affordable buy down, as Leslie had pointed out a moment ago, we have 35 units that we're proposing for buy down right now within the overall plans. What you're seeing here is a total of 860 credits. We have actually three additional credits that we have within this proposal that we are able to apply towards unmet need. And it's a small amount, but it does.
And Ed, just to tack on, I'm looking in particular at the market to affordable. We were pretty conservative on that because it's a new program. But if it's successful and we are higher than 35, then that could be applied toward unmet need, as could any, any sort of unforeseen development that gets us new affordable units that we're not counting for here.
Exactly. Exactly. And a benefit of market to affordable, as you may know, is that you're able to take existing units, so it's not new units, and take those existing units and make them affordable.
So forgive me for being ignorant, but.
That's right.
We've got all these garden apartments.
Mm-hmm.
How do those fit into the equation? There's no way.
Unfortunately, we wish we can take credit for certain ones, especially since some of them are actually rent qualifying as affordable, since they're not deed restricted, since they're not units that were gained by a developer's agreement or some earlier program that would address them as affordable units. We can't take credit for them.
But we can if we bring them into the market to affordable.
That is the time when you can.
Right, it's part of the market to affordable program. The owner landlord has to agree to the deed restriction for 30 years.
And what's great is that we have the housing administrator, as you mentioned, as we saw earlier, is that we've hired a specific entity that will help do that. And they've already started their work to identify units that they think they can approach for affordability.
I was eagerly looking forward to that. I had relayed a story back at the council and that they're both aware of. In the last year and three months, I had two widows living in the apartments. They could afford to live there when I had two social security numbers, but the husband passed away. And with one social security check, they could not afford the rent anymore. And they were begging for help on finding someplace to live. It would have been really, really great if we could have used our trust fund to supplement their rent and let them, they raised their kids there, the husband passed away, let her spend the rest of her life there, you know, and we would subsidize the rent. But we couldn't do it because of that restriction.
Or the program wasn't in place yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say, I had a question. What is the incentive? There must be some incentive for a property owner to do the deed restriction. I'm just curious. It's escaping me.
Well, they have then a guaranteed rent and they don't have a vacancy issued.
Actually, that gets.
And they're getting ahead of their rent.
And they get a subsidy of around, I think it's 85,000 a unit.
It's also gets, what I was going to ask is almost all of our garden apartments are 60 years old.
Mm-hmm.
Almost all of them are going to need substantial upgrades shortly. And is there any way within our zoning, we can contemplate that they might be able to add density to those garden apartments?
That's something I think we can look at in the master plan.
Yeah.
Find ways to incentivize the owners to hand those deed opportunities over.
Exactly.
I don't speak on the record here, but, or officially, but anecdotally, I can tell you that I've privately had conversations with a few developers throughout town that own these garden units. And they're, surprised, surprising to me, not interested in doing that.
It's really difficult because you have to forego a lot of rent.
Right.
In the near term. But actually, you know, it's, it's just, yeah, you lose a lot of income and then you take that risk that.
But when you're dealing with buildings that have been heavily used for 60 years, undoubtedly, some of those units are going to need structural improvements. And in the process, they're going to have to forego that income for some period of time anyway.
One would think. One would think. In answer to Mr. Fajari's question, the other way that you end up in the market to affordable program is you'll have developers that might want to, that might own a development currently but want to develop a new one. And they'll say, okay, we're going to do all market rate here, but what we're going to do is we're going to do some market to affordable at our existing properties. So they'll opt in one of the existing properties in order to do a market rate development somewhere else.
We need to let the Board of Adjustment understand that.
Don't get me started.
Yeah, it's going to be another issue there. Also, to address unmet need, we do have to zone certain areas for overlay zoning, what we call overlay zoning, where you're allowing the existing uses to continue and continue into the future. But that if there was ever a desire to redevelop the property, there is the ability to redevelop them. We do have to anticipate a certain number of unmet need because that is what's required by the rules, as well as Fair Share Housing Center, knowing that we have such an unmet need number. So therefore, what we had done is addressed two locations on North Beverick Road as two locations for potential infill, mixed use, residential over commercial type developments. And I know that's something you're going to be discussing about with the master plan. Also, a development called Lanidex on Parsippany Road, that is a development that, as you may know, there's some vacancy in the office buildings that are there, but there was not the immediate vacancy that was identified. So we have identified them for unmet need as well.
And they have also asked to be studied for an area in need of redevelopment.
That's right.
So that will be coming to this board apart from the housing plan soon.
We also have an office building on 301 Gibraltar Drive, which is adjacent to Route 10 and the Powder Mill Shopping Cent, Powder, no, Powder Mill, blanking on the name, but it's on Gibraltar Drive. It's an existing office building that was also identified as a location for unmet need.
Powder Mill Plaza.
Excuse me?
Powder Mill Plaza.
Powder Mill Plaza, thank you.
Now, these particular, potential projects are not included in the settlement agreement and therefore, traffic external improvements could be something this board could consider when reviewing site plan.
They are identified as unmet need mechanisms, these locations, in the settlement agreement.
Yeah, okay, so the fact that you'll cause the biggest traffic jam on the planet at Lanidex, if you have 34 units per acre?
Yeah. That's 60, 600 units on that location. They had a much bigger vision. I know, I know.
Should have seen what they initially proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the new and improved plan, just so you know.
Ed, can you speak to the extent to which the density on these overlay zones binds the planning board to future site plan applications?
It does, because you do have to have the overlay zoning in place. That's going to be a requirement of the settlement agreement. One of the things I wanted to point out for this board is that you will be charged with adopting the housing element and fair share plan to address this plan. It's a power of this board to do that and a component of the master plan. It's one of the elements of the master plan. In addition to that, there will be a spending plan that's associated with that. That spending plan sets aside the specific funds that have to be distributed from your housing trust fund. One of them will be the market to affordable program. Another one will be some subsidies that will be sort of an insurance policy for the rehabilitation program. A certain amount of the funds have to be set aside for that. Additionally, there will be the need to do the unmet need overlay zoning as well. That's going to be another component that this board will be involved in, in reviewing. In that unmet, unmet need zoning, you do have to put the specific design criteria together for a potential infill development, such as what's being contemplated in the unmet need zone plan.
May I, Ed, from, from this board's perspective, how does the unmet need roster here differ from the inclusionary?
The inclusionary is specific zoning for that site as it exists now. So it's going to be infill for just those specific locations. Unmet need is an overlay, so it's an optional zone that someone can opt into to do. They don't have to replace it, not replacing the zoning that exists there. It's an overlay zone.
And some of these on the list for the overlay zones were as a result of interested parties, you know, who wanted.
Yes.
That ability to develop. Others were areas that, you know, we all talked about as making sense from a planning perspective for, you know, mixed use.
But they were also identified as needed.
Yeah.
But for purposes of the settlement agreement, it sounds to me like this board has no more or less discretion with regard to the unmet need properties than it would with the inclusionary. Is that accurate?
That's probably right.
Okay.
So that sort of does get to addressing my question, the first one being that any development that would occur, would they have to meet these density requirements?
They would have to meet specific requirements. They don't have to achieve the actual density.
Uh-huh.
They could be less.
All right. And if the existing property owners want to use this overlay zoning to redevelop, they would have that flexibility at their discretion?
Correct, except that what's required of the overlays, the overlay zone is the, for instance, you're seeing some mixed use here. That's where we're trying to instill the mixed use aspect, not just all residential. So it's allowing for some commercial development in addition to residential, like for instance, on North Beverick Road. Where we have some existing commercial, it makes sense to add some additional units in that area.
Yeah, I fully appreciate that.
Things like that. But you do have specific zoning requirements for buffers, requirements for parking, requirements for building setbacks, height restrictions, height controls, architectural detailing on buildings. So you do get the ability to zone for those things. Similar to, if you look at the redevelopment plan for Stanbury, some of the controls that were in that document for the building fenestration detailing, things of that nature. So you can do that as well.
It's the type of thing that we, we would have probably done in the, the master plan if this hadn't even been going on.
Exactly, good point.
Kind of already looking at some of these areas.
So that's unmet need. In addition to that, there will be a requirement for what's called a municipal set aside ordinance. What this is, is a catch-all ordinance that, that states that if there was ever a future unforeseen right now redevelopment, rezoning or a use variance of those various types of actions, there would have to be a set aside if there was gonna be realizing additional units of residential at that location. So if there was to be a use variance, I lose my voice, before the zoning board, and if it had five or more units, because it has to be a twenty percent set aside. So imagine if it's just for an infill of three units, no affordable would be required. If it's five, one affordable has to be required. So that is a requirement of every settlement agreement. And it's really, it's a best practices anyway, from the standpoint of making sure your future rounds have at least some units of credit that you can address future rounds.
Ed, is this a structure that can be used to suggest to the Board of Adjustment that whenever a use variance for multifamily residential comes before them?
I'd probably use a stronger word. It mandates.
Okay.
Yes, that they have affordable housing as part of that development.
And if any of these zones identified for unmet need do get developed somehow before the, the other eight fifty-seven, that doesn't affect the eight fifty-seven number?
Uh, no, it does not. Except, one of the things I'm wondering as we do our reporting, if, let's say, if some of the unmet needs were redeveloped before some of the other units, can you move them between columns?
Maybe some of it.
There may be the ability to do so because the towns realized that development. So I would, I would think there was the ability to do so.
Okay, but we still have that requirement to have a certain amount of unmet need.
They didn't wanna see just ordinances that would say capture future units. They wanted to see some realistic mechanisms. In addition to that, you'll have affordable housing ordinance updates that you'll be seeing as this board. And what they mean is they identify specific requirements for the income types, also bedroom distributions. What we mean by that is that of a certain number of affordable units, a certain percentage has to be one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom, things of that nature. Because the three, two and three bedrooms account for what you're looking for as family units. I know we try to limit the amount of impacts to our school system, but at the same time, you have these rules mandating it within your developments. So that's what the rules and the ordinances will be providing for. So that is the end of our presentation.
Can we start from the beginning?
Sure.
Okay, we're just gonna open to the public, but our public dislur.
He's kidding, he's Kerry County. He's back.
This is our open, open, if you have any questions for either of our presenters this evening.
So would you state your name for the record, please?
Nakul Kasadwala.
Thank you.
So it's like, I'm seeing this presentation first time and it was a lot of information there. So one question came into my mind was like, you locate the land where the development is possible, so at least COH can be met as such. So from where I can get the list of land where the further development is available, like somebody has not grabbed that opportunity so far. So what's the best way to approach you guys or that opportunity?
Well, what you're, I can use the microphone. What you're, what you're addressing is probably the issue of vacant land that we had talked about. Of those vacant parcels, we weren't looking to rezone those vacant parcels. It was just to identify what was the realistic development potential of the community. What you may be referring to is areas where there may be zoning for that. There were already developers that were coming to the table that were addressing the town, saying, look, I have these locations, we wanna redevelop these properties. So that is the zoning that we're putting into place is to rezone those properties for those units. Okay, sure enough.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions for Ed or Leslie? Ask as we went along.
Yes, it kinda did that.
Any other questions?
I think he might have asked. This is public.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It wasn't before, it is now.
We should discuss it in the public hearing, so.
It is now. That's right, yeah.
Well, it is now.
Because, because we are settling with Fair Share Housing Center, we were able to get to a point.
Right, and council took action last week to approve itself.
Right. Well, I mean, you guys did a great job.
I'm very impressed.
Thank you for saying that. I wish we could have brought them down lower, of course, but there were many ready, willing, and able developers to deal with. And it's because of, Mr. Dinsmore touched on it earlier, it's because of the desirability of the community. And your access and availability of locations. But one thing I feel as a planner, I know the lack of regional planning, but yet from a locality's perspective, is the ability to do some infill residential in and around your existing office buildings. I think will pay dividends towards rehabilitating your office market from that standpoint. I think we're seeing, and I think as planners, we're starting to see that shift from the urbanized areas down to now the more suburban areas as being a little bit more desirable from the standpoint of, I know millennials in this large cohort of that generation are moving through the years and they will eventually want to have families. Eventually, I'm not sure when, my kids, I'm not sure. I'm not, I'm not counting on anything there. But at the same time, I think it's a opportunity to try to capture some of that, as well as rethinking some of your retail centers, as we're seeing with the Kmart facility. For those of you who may, may be familiar, near the Nabisco Plan on 208, you have that infill development that was right there on Route 208 that, that was able to infill with commercial. And now they have a residential component in the back of the commercial center, doing very well. And actually, that was done by Garden Homes, which is one of the developers of the West Mount Plaza.
One of the problems I have with this, though, office complexes, is that some of these office complexes have kept some buildings vacant on, on purpose. So when they, they quote statistics about office vacancy rate in Parsippany, it seems like a very high number. But it's skewed because some of these, some of these office complexes have kept buildings, entire buildings vacant, looking to do something like this, you know? And it skews our numbers. So our real office vacancy rate, if you, if you deduct those who have ulterior motives, our numbers are really a lot better in Parsippany.
Retail also, I think.
Yeah.
That may be true, but they're still vacant at the end of the day. And they're, and they're still, you know, filing challenges to their assessments, so.
Some large plates, like Kmart. That's a big building to deal with.
I didn't say that.
No, no, no.
I said that.
They should turn it into the Aspen Hotel.
Yeah, there you go. Wait a minute. Back to the future. I, I particularly like the concept of MacCallie. If residents are there and they work there, and that traffic doesn't hit ten or two or two at all. But they're gonna need some retailers. They're gonna need places to, to eat, places to get their dry cleaning done, and their haircut and stuff.
Maybe better sidewalks.
Uh, yeah.
Well, yeah.
They actually have, they have a pedestrian plan that they're working on for their campus.
They promised us that.
They did promise that.
Yes, Susan was there.
But that, that keeps them on the campus. So it's, it's not unlike living in Jersey City and walking down to the office building and stopping at the bar on your way home with your friends and, you know.
That's the plan with most of these. They're trying, everyone's trying to do these live, work, play environments and, you know, we'll see how successful they are in Parsippany.
You know, mini-town center.
Yeah.
That's the Stanbury concept too.
Well, the Kmart will be something like that because, I mean, how many restaurants do you have right there?
Right. You may see even more now.
Well, Stanbury, maybe not so much because there's, I didn't see any offices in that concept plan. It's retail and.
Well, it's retail, but all the people that work retail, those retail stores have to live someplace.
They probably can't afford to.
There's a limited number of affordable units. The retail doesn't pay that much.
I would think it's unlikely that many people will work in retail and live in those very pricey.
Fifteen dollar minimum wage.
Ed, Leslie, the councilman asked for that one page. Do you have copies of this PowerPoint that you can provide to us?
Maybe if you could just give it to Nora, Nora could circulate it to everyone. Would that be the best way, Nora?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I know, I would appreciate it. I'm sure.
It's a lot of important information on that.
I do just have one concern as we're talking about the development of the, especially these mixed use spaces, is the importance of having some form of recreation on these, on these spaces, especially for residences, park space or passive space. Otherwise, these spaces become unusable over time because they're just not good environments for, for residential.
What we saw in many of the proposals was amenity spaces for the residents of the facility, whether it be workout rooms, things of that nature, outdoor, outdoor sitting areas. But at the same time, for the MacCallie business campus, one of the things they, they had said was sidewalks, interconnectivity, plus the open space feature that the councilman mentioned a minute ago along Littleton Road. I see that as the grounds for potentially a new community park.
John, John.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a point of emphasis for me as we go through our master plan.
The, the counterbalance to that, that we've heard a lot of in meetings, is that they're intentionally not offering park spaces and the like because these, these sites are not being designed to attract families with school-aged children for the most part as well. Which is a benefit to the township's schools. So that's something else to consider. Most of these, as you will see, you know, I've, I've had a preview of several of these, these developments. And as you'll see, a lot of them are boasting that they're really marketing toward millennials, towards singles and young couples.
And downsizing seniors.
Bookends.
Exactly, and downside, exactly. And I, you know, I, I challenge anyone to, to count the number of times we're gonna hear the word amenities appear before this board during, during the year 2019. Susan and I are already, I think, a little tired of it.
Everybody likes swings, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Sliding boards. Seesaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a lot to chew on, but.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Obviously, you've done your homework here. And thanks for handling the, the numbers.
Certainly. And we'll make copies of that one for Nora.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you all. See you next month.
All right, so.